That means she's ready to record. Yeah. Please take your seats, come on in, sit down. Joining us this evening on the piano is Jane Howard. Please rise for the singing of the Star Spangled Banner. Thank you, Ms. Howard. Just to give everyone an idea of what the procedure and role is going to be this evening, we're going to open up, we're going to go back into the regular town meeting, the annual, work on Article 51. If Article 51 is not done by the break, I'm going to declare the annual town meeting in recess, and we're going to take up the special town meeting. We'll continue with the special until it's dissolved, and then we'll go back to the next article on our list, or back to 51. But we've spent three hours already on that. I want to make a couple comments. On Wednesday evening, there was what I would consider some unfortunate ad hominem remarks. I myself engaged in it. I called Mr. Haley a loudmouth when he bellowed in. Mr. Haley, I apologize. I don't think anyone should be casting aspersions on anybody else. We shouldn't be directly attacking anybody else. This is a debate. It's not a schoolyard where we call each other various names or things. You should keep it civil and try to stay away from ad hominem remarks. I'd appreciate it if we could all do, keep that level of civility. The other issue I want to bring up is the rule of the substitute motions and amendments to motions. When I instituted that rule, when I first came a couple years back, what always had bothered me about town meeting was members would come in with these great big long substitutes, and would try to explain them, and they're handwriting them, handing them to Mr. Wardon, and none of us out there knew what was going on. That's what the 24-hour, one-meeting rule is meant to address. Major changes. Mr. Good has put up what I sent to him the other day. Can I follow along and read it? Basically, major substitute motions, substantively amended motions. We want to get 24 hours in advance the day before, so you all have it to read. We've all had our proposed votes of all the various committees for at least three, four weeks now. We've all can read them, we've all read through them. If you want to change something, by this point, you know it. During the course of the debate, as happened the other night, Mr. Mar had an idea, he wanted to change something. The rule is not meant to stifle debate. The rule's meant to advance debate, if we all know what we're talking about. Someone wants to make a simple, straightforward change, which in my opinion, Mr. Mar had wanted to do, and once I was able to read his handwriting, that's not an ad hominem remark either.[284.52][284.52](Laughter). That was what my confusion was. I really, I couldn't read and figure out what he was doing. Once I got it in legible form, and I understood what he was doing, it was fine. I've got several people have emailed me on the weekend over this, and I'm going to stick to the rule. But on minor changes, easily understood things, we're going to let them in. We're not here to ramrod through the recommended votes of everybody. We're here to have a debate and to figure out what's best for the town. And we can't do that if we don't allow simple amendments and changes on the fly. That's why we're here, as a legislative body, to do that. So I'm going to stick to the rule, but just remember, it's going to be up to me if we're going to let it, if I'm going to let something in. And I'm kind of strict about it. I'm not going to just let anything fly. It's whether or not I think you all can understand what it is, and you're not going to be surprised by something. That's my basic rule of thumb. So that's what we're going to do. Okay. Are there any new town meeting members who have not yet been sworn in? I don't see any. Ms. Rowe?
Yes. It has moved that all the business of the annual-
Oh, your mic. Press the little button right at the bottom of the, nope, up above, right at the top of the black part of the mic. There you go.
Thank you. I was told I was speaking too loudly last time, so I was trying to moderate it. It has moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth, and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of, at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 11th, 2011, at 8:00 p.m.
All in favor? Opposed? Are any announcements or resolutions? Madam? Hope she beat you toward Harry. You're next, Hugh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cindy Friedman, Precinct 8. I just want to let people know about a meeting that's coming up next Tuesday, May 17th. Senator Donnelly will be holding a budget forum. It's called Massachusetts Budget FY 2012: Why Cuts and Services Should Matter to You. It will be a presentation and a panel discussion, including somebody from Mass Budget and Policy Center, Dr. Thomas Garvia Burlington Medical Association, also part of the Department of Public Health, Joan Butler, Executive Director of Minuteman Senior Services, and Harris Grooman, Massachusetts Political Director of SCIU. We'll be discussing the FY 12 state budget and protecting essential services. You're all invited. It's at the Cary Memorial Library, large meeting room, lower level in Lexington, and it's for all Senator Donnelly's Lexington and Arlington constituents. I'll also put some of the flyers in the back. Thank you.
Mr. McCabe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Harry McCabe, Precinct 21. Reports of my passing, I'm afraid, were premature and unwarranted. And what that means is it's not in the warrant. I had to leave town in a hurry, I'm sorry. I missed a number of meetings, only the second time in 50 years, and I really do appreciate the calls that were made to my home, and the machine just jammed because of the overload. And I will try to call everybody back that called. And thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. McCrory?
Hugh McCrory, Precinct 20. I just wanted to bring to your attention a very small item of news which occurred in our precinct over the last year. Basically, Richard Briand and his brother Donald Briand, they live at Fort Argyle Road, they actually repaved a section of Dundee. They got, they worked with a contractor, they checked with the town, and out of their own pockets, they repaved a pretty ugly part of Dundee, which, you know, obviously, it abuts their property. But I think it's, Richard and Donald are seniors. I think it's worthwhile publicly acknowledging them, and these are the kind of things which make Arlington great. Paid for it out of his own pocket, didn't thank, needed to get, didn't ask for thanks, but I think it's worthwhile, worthy if we acknowledge. Richard, who's commonly known as Dick, they're a long-term resident of Arlington, and he went ahead and checked with the various authorities, and went ahead and did it himself. So it's great. It's a big improvement to Dundee. It's a road which you head up into Heights, opposite Trader Joe's, if you go up into Little Scotland, it's that first road. And if you notice, the sidewalk on the side is now, has been, it was last year, very nicely repaved. So I just wanted to say thanks to Richard and Donald for that.
Thank you. Mr. Coste?
Just want to make an announcement for Wednesday. Next, the following Wednesday, or the next meeting on Wednesday, the Superintendent of Minuteman Regional School District will be here, probably approximately 9 o'clock-ish. And at that time, I'd like to be able to take his budget out of order and move his presentation. His presentation is on your seats now. He's coming here after Belmont. The superintendent has to go to 16 different town, special town meetings, so he tried to accommodate him. But I just wanted to let you know, he'll be here on Wednesday around 9 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Belkus, did you have your hand up? Okay. Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing, any reports to committees? Nope. Okay. And that brings us back to 51. The next on the list was, Mr. Mar is going to give us a 30-second-er. Can't even make the clock go-
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I'm not going to speak to the merits of the article, only to call your attention that on your chairs today is the slightly revised amended motion that I so poorly presented the other night. The syntax has been cleaned up by the moderator, and I want to thank other people, but they know who they are, for assistance in crafting this in a little bit better fashion. The amendment is solely about giving us options. I think the selectman put the cart before the horse the other night, and when, if you look at the main motion, it assumes, it asks us to do too much. This is about options, sending it to a study, have the manager come back next year, and put the options before us. Options are good things in life. I just don't know why we wouldn't want to have that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thielman was next. Somebody, oh, he's still here, good.
Jeff Thielman, Precinct 12. I move the question in all matters under Article 51.
We have a motion to terminate debate. All in favor of terminating debate, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
I can't tell if it's two-thirds or not. Same tellers, everybody in favor of term-
Seven? Yes.
Yes, there was a second, Mr. Judd. I can hear things differently up here. Everyone who wants to terminate debate, please rise. Same tellers? Mr. Schlickman?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Ms. O'Connor?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Ms. Tembley?
Thirty-one.
Mr. McCabe?
Twenty-five.
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 All opposed, please rise.
Zero.
Zero up front. Ms. Schlickman?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. It's not a two-third vote, it's 108 in the affirmative, 73 in the negative. Sir?
Can you, where is Mr. McCabe again on the eyes? I thought I heard you say it, I don't remember.
He said fifteen. Harry, how many did you have? Oh, on the eyes. Yes.
Rayba?
Yes.
Turned around and raised?
Yes.
It comes twenty-five.
That's what I had, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. So 108 to 73, it is not two-thirds. Next on the list was Mr. Deist.
First, I have a question, Mr. Moderator.
Sir?
The, John Deist, Precinct 13, and also a member of the Finance Committee. The article, as it's stated up there, is different from what we were looking at last time.
That's the actual warrant article itself, that's not the vote.
I see.
Yeah.
Could we have the vote, please? You don't have the vote.
We're not that far into the electronic age. We think we figured that out before the meeting tonight.
Well, I'm speaking to the vote. As you may recall-
The vote says in your selectmen's report, under Article 51, where it says voted.
Yes, in the selectmen's report, Article 51. You may recall, I spoke earlier with regard to some contentious snow removal issues, and I attempted, or I tried to urge us to try to get together, and I'm going to try to do that to some extent tonight, because I think there's a lot of polarization that's happened in the arguments that have occurred. And also, it's my opinion anyway, that when the town meeting gets very emotional about something, it doesn't do very wise things. It does things, or it has the potential to do things that are not so wise. Whereas if we can be more logical, then I think we do a better job. So I'm going to attempt to try to give you my logic about this article, as stated in the selectmen's report. There seems to be a great deal of suspicion that the article is an attempt to thwart the democratic process by which we vote for our, some of our town officials. More alarming, in my view, have been some statements to the effect that this is an attempt to deprive citizens of being able to vote for those offices by bringing those offices under the manager. That is not at all how I read the article, and I'd like to explain my logic about the article. And I suggest that we look carefully at the article itself, because that's the thing that we will be voting. In particular, the article states that the manager is to do research, and he's supposed to come back with articles to us in the next town meetings. Now, one might think that bringing articles forward is sort of premature, in the sense that what we're trying to do is figure out whether or not we should do such a thing. I suggest that bringing articles forward is a very important mechanism by which we do the debate. And if we don't have articles before us, then there's no real significant basis for debate. We just sort of talk, you know, in a hand-waving fashion, as opposed to having particular things before us to debate. So I suggest that the combination of research and articles will allow us, in the next town meeting, to do a deliberative debate process by which we can come to some kind of useful conclusion. The study itself, or the desire for this study itself, stems from the current process by which the town and the schools create the budget. And I'd like to speak from the point of view of someone who's witnessed that process for many years, as a member of the school, a member of the Finance Committee. The town departments under the manager create the budgets for all of the town departments. And the school superintendent and the staff, and the supervision within the schools create the school budget. And to a great extent, they're very independent processes. The town does its budget, the school does its budget, there's some interchange between the superintendent and the manager, and then it's really kind of up to the combination of those two people in many ways, and their aides and the Finance Committee to bring the two budgets together. And finally, the school budget appears as one huge one, number 20, in the Finance Committee report. And it's more than half of our total budget. But be that as it may, the two processes occur separately, and they occur, as Alan Jones, the proponent for this article, has put forward to you in a quite inefficient fashion. And more importantly, in my opinion, they occur in a way so that there is less chance to find mistakes in the process. And I would suggest that in some ways, it might have been possible to find the mistake that occurred last year that caused us so much difficulty. So this is a process by which the manager and his people, and the school committee and superintendent and their people create these budgets. And the manager is asked to look at these two processes and try to figure out how to combine them. It's also important to understand that the elected officials have virtually no responsibility or role in this particular part of the process. They really don't do anything, except in maybe a very peripheral way, in the process of creating those two budgets. It's the superintendent, and the manager, and their people, and the Finance Committee that create those budgets. So what's being addressed here is that process, a process that has, and I don't mean this in a nasty way at all, relatively little to do with the treasurer. The treasurer has other very important things to do. His job is to bring the money in that will pay for those budgets, to pay the amounts of money that are allotted in those budgets. So here's why, here's where I am trying to appeal to your logic, in that the treasurer and other elected officials have relatively little or nothing to do with the development of these budgets. There is, there has arisen a, what I would consider to be an illogical emotional process by which somehow people think that the voted officials and the process for voting those officials is threatened. And I submit to you that it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with this process by which these two budgets get developed, and trying to make that more efficient. And having the manager come forward, as he will, I'm sure, in very expeditious fashion, next year, with articles that we can argue, is a perfectly logical and reasonable way to try to get at some of these difficulties that are associated with both the inefficiencies and the lack of observability into what's going on in the budget processes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tully?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Tully, Precinct 14. First of all, I want to say that I found Mr. Peluso's remarks the other night genuinely inspiring and wonderful, and I thank him for his remarks. I, you know, in my 18 years in the town meeting, I've heard nothing like him, and that's, I think we owe him a lot of gratitude for inspiring us thusly. Having said that, I hope I can be the manifestation of the sentiment that he expressed in his remarks, but I still stand here sometimes, or rather, sit back there, and I scratch my head at some of the things that are said. I don't mean to necessarily, to personally disparage anybody, but when someone tries to convince me that indicating our support for something is not the same as supporting that same thing, it strikes me as a bit of mental gymnastics that I think even if I were Mary Lou Retton, I probably wouldn't be able to accomplish very well. Some of us, some among us, I think, have trouble appreciating why some others of us tend to sometimes be cynical or suspicious, and I would suggest that it's really that type of "doth protest too much" commentary that sometimes raises a red flag with us. So having said that, I would urge everybody to adopt Mr. Mar's amendment. I think even if we are opposed to the article proper, putting it in a more palatable fashion for us to vote on, I think, is a win regardless of how we stand on the underlying article. With respect to the article itself, I'd like to make a few brief observations. I was privileged enough to serve on the 2005 committee that Ms. LaCourte referenced. I think it was 2005, it may have been 2006, and I know she referenced that she was a newly-minted select person at that time, and in the ensuing five or six years, she's since changed her mind, and that is absolutely her prerogative, and I don't begrudge her that. However, I would like to let everybody know that that committee was comprised of some very experienced individuals, some very thoughtful and intelligent individuals. We were a fairly diverse committee, and it was not a committee of inexperienced people that came to the conclusion that we didn't necessarily need to tinker with the treasurer position or the other finance, financial departments as they're currently comprised. Mr. Foskett, who was a Finance Committee member emeritus, Jim Darty, one of our assessors and a longtime town meeting member, Fire Chief Jefferson, who I think has been in town meeting at least as long as I have, and I'm certain he's been around town and involved with the fire department for much longer than that, myself. This is my 18th town meeting. I think it was around my 13th or so at the time when I served on the committee. John Billifer, our former treasurer of 30-plus years, and a selectman for several years before that. Town meeting member Alan Reedy, who's out there somewhere, was also on the committee, and I'm sure there are others whom I have forgotten, so my apologies for that. However, despite the diversity and the, well, let's just leave it at our diversity, we had a fairly broad, if not unanimous consensus, to the best of my recollection, and someone can correct me, maybe Ms. LaCourte has the vote committed to memory, I don't, but I thought it was nearly unanimous. It was near unanimous that the elected treasurer position works for Arlington, at least then. And that brings me to my next question, which is frankly, what has changed in that interim? Not that things can't change, but I don't know that anything significant has. I certainly support efficiency and cost-cutting. However, I think as we try to move for another override, we certainly need to assure all the taxpayers that we're doing everything we can, and we've turned over every stone and explored every nook and cranny to cut costs. I think if we don't do that, then our much-needed override is certainly doomed to failure. However, I also believe that the elected treasurer position is a significantly important check and balance for our system of government, and so if we consider this article, we need to consider it against that backdrop and proceed very cautiously and carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tully. Janice Weaver? Mr. O'Connor? Mr. O'Connor?
Jim O'Connor, Precinct 20, 19. That's when I'm the election warden for the precinct. The topic that we're discussing has really impressed me, that there's quite a large amount of open debate, respectful thought sharing, and Mr. Peluso's remarks really impressed me in that there is a lot of divisiveness in this body, either between the front and the back, or the left or the right, or people that vote for or against. But I think what this debate has brought about is some discussion. Mr. Marr's substitute article certainly reduces my concerns about the initial motion that was brought before us. Because last year, I asked the body about whether we were a resolution town meeting. And every time there was something said, we were asked to pass a resolution about our support. And I think that that issue that Mr. Tully already presented was that we're not being asked to offer our support until we fully debate and discuss the merits and the negative aspects of the issue. A couple of things that I thought about when I was listening to the various speakers before was an interchange back here about some sort of a negotiation about compromise. Every one of these articles, when the Board of Selectmen puts the warrant out, is for us, 252 elected residents of Arlington to debate. There shouldn't be, based upon the open meeting law, preconceived notions of how we're going to deliberate and what the final conclusion would be. In addition, as a tax consultant, I wanted to point out that I was very concerned about one of the remarks made last week about our treasurer. Whether it be our treasurer, our town manager, the boards, volunteer or not, we're all serving in a capacity to help this town. And one of the things that I don't see Mr. Gilligan doing is just processing papers. I've had the occasion to confer with him in the office about rebonding some of the negotiated instruments to take care of the Sims property. And last year, under his initiation, he saved this town a lot of money. That is because when we were going to be considered for a new bonding rating, he, before the fact, was able to negotiate a reduced rate. I think we owe a lot of gratitude to our elected officials, and especially to all the volunteers that serve, especially, even though some of them are compensated in a minor amount, the Board of Selectmen and all of the people here work together to make these issues happen. And I certainly think that our town manager, if you look at the budget, is $260,000 that we're spending for the assistant and the town manager. I would think we have an incredible think tank of resource there to come up with good ideas for how this town could save some money. And I do think that we need to enable them to discuss this, bring us some ideas. But I really like the fact that this debate is probably one of the longest ones that I've been at in the 15 years that I've been a town meeting member. And people are listening to each other, not terminating debate, and enabling a free and open discussion about what might be good for the town. I'm still listening to the various ideas that are out there after Mr. Marr's proposal removing words that say "we support" and ask the town manager to do something specifically. I really think we need to offer ideas, but the idea of supporting it before we know the answer, I think, is way too soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilligan a second time?
Stephen Gilligan, Precinct 13, Town Treasurer. Mr. Moderator, before I begin my remarks, I'd like to point out that I placed a memo on everyone's seat. Last Wednesday night, remarks were made ad hominem against me about my qualifications as treasurer. I'd like to set the record straight real quick. I hold an MBA with a concentration in finance, a degree in economics, certificates in public management, debt management, investment management, and contract management, and I'm a certified Massachusetts assessor. Those are but part of my qualifications, which I had prior to taking office. And again, Mr. Moderator, I was elected three times as treasurer. Mr. Moderator, it is obvious to anyone watching last Wednesday's debate that once again the Board of Selectmen have managed to initiate an action that divides Arlington. It was equally obvious that the divisiveness that was so aptly pointed out by Mr. Peluso was generated by the deep distrust that many of Article 51's opponents have of the motives, objectivity, and manner in which Article 51 was proposed. A point of clarification is in order regarding the potential impact of this article on the overall town budget. Depending upon the number of personnel and departments that are included in the category "financial," these departments, assessors, comptroller, and treasurer, account for barely 1.5% of the total budget. In the case of Article 51, Town Meeting is expected to accept without question that the town manager, who clearly stated his preference for a consolidated finance department, would objectively prepare an implementation plan that is thoroughly researched, properly designed, with clear lines of authority and responsibility for the proposed consolidated finance department. Town Meeting is further expected to believe that this consolidation and promised job reductions will be equitably applied and not serve the self-interest of the town manager and the Board of Selectmen. We have all the experience, we have all experienced that particular organizational moment when we realize that a predetermined outcome by a boss or a powerful interest group has eliminated any hope for a rational plan and that a very poor idea will continue forward. Town Meeting is at that moment where it needs to recognize that nothing of value will come from a warrant article like Article 51 that has so many conflicting instructions and goals and has generated so much conflict. It's been stated, appointed officials. Mr. Moderator, we should defeat Article 51 in all its forms. Mr. Moderator, I ask that John Billifer, resident of the town and former town treasurer, be granted the opportunity to speak, and he's requesting five minutes.
He's got the remainder of your time, because you didn't request it up front. So if he wants to come and use your last two minutes, he better move it. Is he here? Where? Mr. Billifer, you gonna use his time? Okay. Hey, Sean, what's going on with all those chairs back there? There's a reason there aren't chairs back there. It caused dissension in voting ranks.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Those who know me know I never could do anything in two minutes. I have some remarks that I think will take about five minutes. Could I have five minutes?
Well, it's up to the will of the meeting. There's been a request for him to have five minutes. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? You got five minutes.
Thank you very much. After speaking with you last Wednesday evening, I re-- oh, John Billifer.
John Billifer, what's your address, John?
John Billifer, I'm the chairman of the Retirement Board, former treasurer, and I live at 15 Victoria Road, Arlington. After speaking with you last Wednesday evening, I remained in the town hall to listen to the continuing debate on this article, and was impelled, as one who has served Arlington's treasurer for 33 years, to speak a second time in order to take issue with some of the conclusions drawn by the proponents of Article 51. Frankly, I was taken aback, as were some of you, by your reaction to Mr. Toasty's characterization of elected officials as being unqualified amateurs, and that no qualified person would leave their job to run for the office of treasurer. The background and qualifications of elected treasurers over the past 60 years is in direct contrast to this pessimistic assessment. My predecessor as town treasurer, Fran Coughlin, a Harvard graduate, left a financially secure position to run and be elected in the 1950s and served for almost 20 years before being appointed a senior vice president and head of the municipal department of a major Boston bank. I am also a Harvard graduate with undergraduate degrees in American Government and Economics, a law degree, and a master's degree in finance, who gave up a law practice in 1972 when elected treasurer after serving eight years as a selectman. Mr. Gilligan has told you his qualifications, and he holds a master's in business administration degree with a major in finance, as well as certificates of achievement in numerous related fields. As far as the prospects for future candidates for Arlington treasurer concerned, I strongly believe that there are qualified individuals living in Arlington interested in public service as a career who would compete for this office, particularly during this period where the pension and health benefits in the public sector are in many instances superior to those in private sector corporations. As I see it, the key area of controversy in this discussion regarding an elected versus an appointed treasurer lies in the definition of whether the job is administrative or whether it has policy implications. The proponents of this article continuously refer to the town treasurer as an administrator rather than a policymaker. They seem to believe that if they say this often enough, people will eventually believe it. Policy is defined in Webster's Dictionary as a course of action pursued by an elected official on behalf of his or her constituents, whereas an administrator works for and is responsible to his or her boss. I recall when I was first elected treasurer in 1972, someone suggested that I could sit back, see that the money was collected and accounted for, and I would have the job for life. My reply was that I didn't run for the job to be a bean counter. I believe then, as I do now, that as an elected official, I was in a position to influence financial policy in the town of Arlington. And I believe I had an influence on financial policy when I filed and had enacted legislation to establish a first-in-the-nation municipal tax checkoff scholarship fund, and I believe I influenced financial policy when I filed and had legislation enacted allowing Arlington to commence funding its enormous pension liabilities, a program that over the years has stabilized Arlington's pension appropriation and freed up funds to be used for other purposes. And I believe that Steve Gilligan influenced financial policies when he brought forward a plan to convert the Sims Hospital bond anticipation notes to permanent financing at more favorable interest rates. During this discussion, a big deal has been made about the lack of communication and coordination of Arlington's financial affairs. This lack of communication would quickly disappear if the selectman, Finance Committee, and Town Manager would forget about trying to control Arlington's finances and begin treating the town treasurer as a policymaker rather than an administrative bean counter. When the Town Manager Act was established in the 1950s, the drafters of the act made sure that Arlington's town manager would have complete authority and control over the departments he administered. To offset that authority and control, the drafters of Arlington's act made sure provisions were included that acted as a check and balance on the manager's power through an elected town treasurer, town clerk, and Board of Assessors.
Almost done?
I'll just wrap up by saying, when voting on this article, I would ask you to think long and hard before disrupting this separation of powers by allowing this study over the appointed town treasurer to move forward. I suggest that you vote no on Article 51. Thank you very much for allowing me the time and listening to me.
Thank you. Mr. Judd?
Mr. Moderator, could you tell me roughly how many people have already spoken and how many more wish to speak? Because this is, I think we're setting a record here.
Generally, it's against my policy to do so, but the list now... I have 70 people. About half of them have spoke.
Well, I think that proves one thing, that there's 70-some-odd people besides myself who wish to happen to say anything about what's going on with this article. I tend to think that this is not going to be an easy way to meld that together. I think both sides seem to be fairly well set in their idea of how things should or should not be. I just asked for a show of hands. Does anybody remember Carmen Foratano?
I'm the one who takes votes.
Please, listen, listen. I said I would like to know if anybody remembers Carmen Foratano. Now, mostly people who are much older here. He was the last elected auditor, if I remember correctly. Appointed? I thought he was elected, Carrie. Okay. Well, as I say, that's a long time back. And I'm wondering if we had an auditor with a little more authority, that perhaps the problem with the school budget wouldn't have arisen, because the auditor would have known to warn the various officials that they couldn't do it that way. Whether that would have made any difference, I do not know. However, I feel certain that we will not be able to come to very much of an agreement on this article, even with the help of Mr. Marr's correction of some of the problems of the article. And I think, I don't want to see this town meeting get too divided, because there are some, I think, pretty strong feelings on both sides. I don't think we want an appointed treasurer or anybody else, but I would like to see some concrete proposals, not general, "Well, this is what we want to do," but it's like putting the cart before the horse. And I would rather, if possible, try to find a way that both sides will be satisfied and nobody will think they lost. Everybody will be a winner. Therefore, I move no action. With the no-action movement, I believe that nobody can feel that they lost, there hasn't been a recorded vote, and it's a go-to-back-to-the-drawing board is basically what no action would mean. So, Mr. Moderator, as I say, I would like to move no action on this article.
Are you making a substitute? Will that hear me out? A substitute motion for no action. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir. Whatever you think is a proper form.
No, I'm just asking you what you want to do. You want to make a substitute motion for no action.
Yes.
You've got to get someone to second that.
Yes.
Sir. Mr. Marr, what's your point of order?
If the article goes down, it's an automatic no-action vote.
I agree with you.
The main motion, the content of the meeting, the subject, the control of moderator.
I'm in agreement with you.
The argument there is a lot of...
No, the, 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 shh. The point is that if we vote it down, it's no action automatically. We don't have to actually do a substitute for no action.
Yes, I understand that, but I think no action possibly would leave a few less people, shall we say, disturbed by what went on.
Miss Rice?
According to my memory, and I've been here since 1972, with two years of those exceptions, any time an article was brought before this town meeting, or before any board or committee, if the article either was not properly descriptive, or seemed to be defective, or nobody was for sure what the article meant, usually that body would suggest a vote of no action. That is why I'm suggesting it, because at the moment, I believe that this article, either, no matter how well Mr. Marr has tried to correct it, I think that there are still too many defects and too much suspicion. I would rather see a no-action vote than just a straight up or down vote, because I don't think that's going to be, this would be, shall we say, a graceful way to get over with this thing. So, as I say, that is my thought, that no action, even though, as Mr. Marr says, if we turn down the article, but I think if we vote no action now, or soon, if ever, that we'll...
You can technically make the motion for no action, as a substitute, but it's not going to make anybody feel better if they lose. as a substitute, but it's not going to make anybody feel better if they lose.
Well, I'm not sure.
If we tell the selectmen no action to what we've been debating for four hours.
I'm not sure if it will or won't.
I don't really see the point.
I'm not, as I say, Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure if it will or it won't satisfy everyone, but I would rather see it that way.
I'm getting from the moderator emeritus, I'm getting the no-you-can't-do-it nod.
Well, as I say, I would like the amended motion to be voted first before we do anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put you on the list, Mr. Pluseau. The next on the list was Mr. Wagner, who, if he's in his traditional spot, isn't here. So, sorry, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Kleiman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stuart Kleiman, Precinct 1. Move the question on all matters related to this article.
Okay. We have another motion to terminate debate. We'll call this one T3. All in favor of terminating the debate, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
That's two-thirds. Not that we should be happy. We've done a very good job of debating this all sides. So, we're now going to take a series of votes. First before us is going to be Mr. Marr's substitute, which you should all have on your chairs. And it should all be clear to you what he's doing. And is there any question on what his vote is? Seeing none. All in favor of Mr. Marr's substitute motion, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
In my opinion, it is an affirmative vote. All right, we have five people rising. So, we're going to take a voice, folks. We have five people rising. All in favor of Mr. Marr's amendment, please rise. Ms. Mahan, up front? 11 in the affirmative up front. Mr. Schlickman, how many on the left? 25 on my left. Mr. O'Connor?
46.
Forty-six on the left center. Mr. Trembley?
34.
34 in the right center. 34. Mr. McCabe?
33.
33 on the right. All opposed to Mr. Marr's amendment, please rise. Ms. Mahan, how many up front? Zero up front. Zero in the negative up front. Mr. Schlickman, how many on the left?
17.
17 on the left. Mr. O'Connor? Four. Four. Mr. Trembley?
14.
14. Mr. McCabe?
Nine.
Nine. 149 in the affirmative, 44 in the negative. It is approved. We now have before us the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen as amended and substituted by Mr. Marr's vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
It's... It was very close. I'm going to call it as a no vote. I'm going to say it's a negative. All right, we have five people rising. We have rise... Everyone who is in the affirmative for the main motion as substituted by Mr. Marr, please rise. All in favor, please rise. Same tellers. As substituted. Sir. People don't understand what we're doing. What we always do every time. We substituted Mr. Marr's vote for the Board of Selectmen vote. Now, we're voting on the main motion as substituted. Yeah, if you want Mr. Marr's to become law, you're going to stand up and vote now. I hope that's what y'all did. Do we have to do it again? What do you think? All right, Mr. Trembley says yes. Everyone who wants Mr. Marr's amendment to be the main motion, and they want it to do it... All right. All in favor of, as substituted by Mr. Marr... How else can I say it? I have to say it that way. Everyone in favor of the amendment, please rise. They're all confused. That's what I said, I thought. All in favor of the main motion as amended, please rise. That's what I said, I thought, three times. Diane?
11.
Two little skinny chicken legs. Mr. Schlickman?
19.
19. Mr. O'Connor?
41.
41. Mr. Trembley?
31.
31. Mr. McCabe?
26.
26. All opposed to the amendment, please rise. Zero up front. Mr. Schlickman? 24 the left. Mr. O'Connor?
10.
10. Mr. Trembley?
17.
17. Mr. McCabe?
18.
18. 69. The final tally is 128 in the affirmative, 69 in the negative. Motion carries. No, we don't want a roll call, boy. Yep. All righty then. We're going to declare the annual town meeting in recess. And, sir, what purpose do you arise? You're considering, serving notice and reconsideration. Very good. Hold on. Oh, yes, sir. Did you vote on the prevailing side, sir? He did. Yeah, that was Mr. Deist. I had to get that for the record. Okay, we are now declaring this annual town meeting in recess, and that brings us to the special town meeting. Recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in this row.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a new duty, I see. I'm going to read the warrant. It is requested that the members of the Board of Selectmen and elected officials of the town, town manager, department heads of the town, and staff, superintendent of schools and staff, committees, commissions, and boards of the town, Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee and Superintendent, members of the General Court representing Arlington, and also any consultants who have been retained to work for the town relative to articles to be acted on by this meeting, representatives of interested parties of Article 2, and representatives of the news media be permitted to sit within the special town meeting enclosure.
Second, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
So moved. Madam Town Clerk, do you declare that the special town meeting has been duly called and that you have the constable's return of the warrant? So, she says yes, she does. Ms. Rowe?
It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the special town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 11, 2011, at 8:00 p.m.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Article 3, any reports of committees? Do anybody have a report they want to submit on this? The selectmen and the finance reports are already before the committee, before the town meeting, I believe, from... We took them earlier. Any other reports of committees? Yes, sir. Where are these located? They're located in the back of the selectmen's report? Oh, the finance committee. I thought the selectmen had some, too, didn't they? They're all the back of the finance committee report. I thought they reported on one. They did. Here in both. Okay. Article 2, Ms. Rowe? Did you find them?
Page 25.
Page 25. Thank you, Mr. Assistant Town Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'd like Christine Conley to come up and speak under this article.
Thank you. Christine Conley, Director of Health and Human Services. It's not on.
Yes, just get a little closer to the mic, Christine.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. No, you cannot. Can you now? Okay, thank you. So, what you have here before you this evening is an amended 2011 budget for the Arlington Youth Counseling Center's enterprise fund. There had been, last year... Sorry, I guess people cannot hear me, so I will speak up. Last year, town meeting voted to cut back some funding to the Arlington Youth Counseling Center, which prompted the agency to reevaluate the way services were provided. So, we hired a consultant to assist us with evaluating the agency, and we implemented a FIFA service-based counseling model. So, we went from town staff providing mental health counseling to youth and families to hiring FIFA service clinicians who we pay per session. We then developed contracts with the health insurance companies, including Mass Health, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Tufts, Harvard Pilgrim, and we bill insurance for each session that's provided. As a result, we had to amend the budget for FY11, which you have here before you. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody wish to address the article, Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. First, I have a question for Director Conley. How has this impacted the services that you provide, Christine?
Ms. Conley, has it been impacting your services?
Christine Conley, Director of Health and Human Services. It has actually improved our services. We're able to now offer more counseling to more youth and families. Last year, we had a significant waitlist of youth and families needing services. And this year, it's been significantly covered by our FIFA service clinicians. We've been able to hire clinicians as we need them. So, currently, we have, I believe, 16 youth on the waiting list as opposed to last year where we had over 40.
And would you make any other comments about this change that you might wish to make? Good, bad, or indifferent?
We have been doing very well. We have recently begun our fundraising campaign. So many of you might be seeing that out there. We've started writing grants and looking for foundation funding. So, we're really looking at alternative ways to fund this agency.
Thank you. And I have a comment on the type of warrant article that was put in here. This is something that I believe amendments to budgets, this is something that many towns put in their warrant, their regular warrant, each and every year. I believe that this was something that was proposed previously by perhaps Division 2020 Physical Resource Task Group. I think this is a good housekeeping article that the finance committee and the town manager should consider inserting every year so we don't have to have a special just to do this. Thank you.
Mr. Deist?
John Deist, a member of the Finance Committee, also town meeting member from Precinct 13 and on the subcommittee along with Mary Margaret Franchelmont, within the Finance Committee overseeing youth services. And I just want to say that she and I, and I think I can speak with you, Mary Margaret, if you're here, she and I are very, very pleased with the way that youth services has evolved over the last year. I think the manager and Christine Conley have done a wonderful job in creating a stable organization that has funding to do its job and is, if anything, a great, an enormous benefit to the town and maybe even an enormous benefit to the whole region because these services are sort of only available in many ways right here in Arlington and paid for as well in many ways from people's insurance as opposed to being subsidized as was the case in the past by the town. So, it's a win-win all the way around, as best I can tell, for Arlington.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Deist. Mr. Judd?
Lyman Judd, Precinct 9. Just curious as to... One section here says total increased revenues or increased revenues, which happens to coincidentally balance the total increased expenses. I'm just curious as to where this money came from. I would like to know if maybe we just collected more revenue than was expected. I would also like to thank the moderator for not having a vote on my amended motion and thank him for allowing Mr. Marr to interrupt while I was speaking. Other than that, I think that this... I would just like either the Finance Committee or someone else to just explain where this money was dug up from.
Ms. Conley, do you know where the money came from?
Christine Conley, Director of Health and Human Services. We began billing health insurance companies at a much higher level this year. That's where you're going to see the additional revenues coming in from. And the additional expenses are the FIFA service clinicians, which we hadn't built into the budget when we prepared it last January.
Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Motion to terminate debate on all matters in this article.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's terminated. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Finance Committee is printed in their report, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote, so declare. Number 2. That brings us to Article 3. I have before you the recommended vote of the FinCom for Arlington High Rehab. Someone want to talk about that? No, Mr. Sullivan's going to tell us about it.
Yes, the town maintains a municipal buildings insurance fund to cover any losses to property damage that are not insured. We have $100,000 deductible on our policy. So, that's what that fund we maintain is there to cover. We did have a burst pipe at the high school this year which caused some significant damage beyond our deductible. And we're looking to transfer $92,000 from that fund in order to cover those damages. Glad to answer any questions anyone has about that.
Mr. McCabe? A question has been made, have the repairs been made? Have you got to get up and announce?
Not completely yet, but most have.
Anyone else wish to address the article? Seeing none, all in favor of the recommended vote, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous vote, so declare. That brings us to Article four. Mr. Toasty?
Mr. Foskett, who is Chair of the Capital Budget Committee and a leading part in both Articles Four and Five, is out of the country on business, and I think it would be critical to hear from him on both of these articles along with the capital budget because they're all interrelated. Therefore, I would move to postpone Articles Four and Five to the sixth, May 16th, which is next Monday.
All in favor of postponing, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? They so postponed. Mr. Toasty, I only have a recommended vote of no action on Number Four, is there another vote?
No, but he's going to speak to that because we have to take.
Okay, please, yeah.
There's going to be action taken in the capital budget, which is in the annual town meeting, and that action will make action on Article Four and the special not needed.
Okay.
And I think it's important for him to be there to explain those elements.
Now, we postponed it, I just was wondering if we could expect something else. Okay, so six, five and six are postponed, two, five, four and five. Okay, the 11th, and next month, the 16th, right?
16th, right.
Five, 16, that brings us to number six. Oh, let me tell you, it's a break. No, it's 15 minutes. Yeah, it's number, someone want to speak to it, number, someone's got to get up and introduce it. Yes, Ms. Brody.
Good evening, Kathleen Bodie, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for allowing me to speak to this particular article. We had two invoices from arbitrators for work that was done during FY09 year. However, they did not submit their invoices to us to well over a year after they rendered their services and after the time that the books had closed on FY09. So the purpose for this article tonight is to have funds available in order to close out these invoices. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Tully?
Joe Tully, Precinct 14. I apologize to Dr. Bodie, I missed the first few words of her commentary. Did you indicate who we're paying pursuant to this article?
The names of the two arbitrators.
These are for payment to arbitrators, is that?
These are paid to arbitrators.
And I understand the article itself says what it's not related to. Is there, is there anything you can tell us as to what it is related to? Certainly, I don't want to just, I don't want to know specifics of personnel issues, but can you, is this a staff grievance? Is this a IEP issue with a student and its family?
These are both staff grievances.
And do we send out notices to our vendors to ask them to pay us before the end of the fiscal year? This is the first time I recall doing this, so I imagine in the absence of some sort of notice, we would be doing this every single year. How do the vendors generally know to pay us? Or, I'm sorry, how do our service providers know?
In the, for arbitrators, they submit their invoice through the AAA, which is the American Arbitrators Association, which was the case in both of these, and they also at the same time submit their invoice to us. Generally speaking, arbitrators usually submit their invoice almost immediately upon submitting their decision. It was quite unusual, in fact, to have two arbitrators, two independent arbitrators, submit their invoices so late. No, we don't send notices out to vendors saying, please pay us. Generally, what we do is if we have somebody that has had a, we encumber invoices, but then there comes a certain point when the books for that year are closed out, and then if that invoice or a payment comes forward, we don't have the ability to be able to pay it.
Thanks. I did have one other question, which you answered in the scope of your comments. My only other question, I guess, would be directed to the town council or through the moderator, anyone else who I guess is deemed appropriate to answer. What happens if we don't vote by 90% in favor of this article? I assume these people just don't get paid? Do we send them a letter saying, I'm sorry, town meeting didn't authorize the payment?
Ms. Rice, what would happen if we don't vote to pay these folks?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Juliana Rice, Town Council.
Shh, quiet, please.
If town meeting doesn't authorize this payment, then no, these folks not only won't get paid, they cannot get paid under the law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kleiman? Kleiman?
Thank you, Ms. Marlowe, Stuart Kleiman, Precinct 1. There's something that's terribly wrong here. I used to have a job where I worked with contractors, and there was a clause in the contract, said if they didn't bill within 30 days, then they wouldn't get paid. I actually had a contractor that billed me six months later, and she wasn't happy because we did not pay her. I don't know if we have any such clause in any contract with the school department, but for somebody to bill, this, we're almost at the end of fiscal year 11, that's two fiscal years away, and all of a sudden, we're talking about paying a bill from fiscal year 09. I think, I think it's, frankly, it's too late. If somebody did not bill before then, didn't do due diligence for their own work, that's their problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to answer to, did you have a question embedded in there, or no?
Thank you, thank you. Well, one is, do we, do we have a clause in a contract which gives a time limit for billing?
Dr. Bodie, do you know if there's such a clause in your contracts?
We don't have contracts per se with arbitrators. When a particular case goes to the AAA, they, there's a process by which arbitrators are selected, and I'm not aware of any clause to that effect. Last year, the reason why it's in FY11 coming before you is we didn't even get their bills until, I think, late May last year. So it wasn't possible to put it forward into a special town meeting for last year.
I understand, but my point stands that they would know, any arbitrator or anybody would know that fiscal year ends on June 30th and would know to get their bill in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mano?
I'm a little confused. Is there a contract, a set rate for every arbitrator? I mean, do we know how much we're going to pay them before they arbitrate?
Well, I don't know, actually, all we're talking about now is $4,207. Arbitrators probably have a set fee per hour. I'm getting a nod yes. And did you know what the rate was prior to entering into arbitration?
I guess what I'm asking is, how many hours are we paying for? What period of time are we paying for it? And as Mr. Kleiman said, there should be a restriction as to submitting a bill late, and I'm just curious to what the hourly rate is for an arbitrator.
Dr. Bodie's going to give us an answer on that.
For an arbitrator, it is based on about $1,200 a day, but that includes their writing of the decision and doing the research for the decision. So it's, what they charge is simply for their presence during the day of the arbitration, and these were two-day arbitrations, both of them.
Okay, I have one more question. I think it would have been easier for us to absorb this if in this warrant, it said time from April 10th to April 21st, we had an arbitrator who had to be paid this amount of money. There should have been a set contract that we could look at so that when a bill came in, we can verify that the contract is equal to what he's asking for in payment. And I don't see any of this in a warrant, I just see a lot of words, and I'm not comfortable with that.
We don't have, we don't have an independent contract with the arbitrator, that's not how the process works. It goes through the American Arbitration Association and gets referred to through the process of, the grievance process with the MTA.
Okay, so there's no accountability. I just find it hard, as an independent contractor myself, to not have in writing a contract with a said person, that I'm going to give you my time, my professional time, and this is what it's going to be, and I will bill you for such fee. So I'm having a hard time with that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Judd?
Lyman Judd, Precinct 9. To follow on with Ms. Moreno, I have a simple question. If the, this is the way the American Arbitration Association runs their business, should we be doing business with them? I also have a AAA card, but that's just for towing my car. I really, I believe that obviously we're morally obligated to pay this bill, but I think the payment should include a rather, shall we say, terse letter telling them exactly what kind of problem they have caused for the town and that they are darned lucky that we're paying them. And I think that the American Arbitration Association should get the same letter. Plus, I hope we will make sure that we never hire either of these two arbitrators again.
Okay.
Other than that, nothing.
Okay. Mr. Siano? Hopefully, he's going to terminate.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hiya. Couple of, couple of questions.
Name and precinct?
Frank Siano, Precinct 15. If we, if we do not pay these two arbitrators, query, won't they bring suit? And won't the suit then cost us more than the $4,000? We've got to pay them.
Well, technically, we're talking, we're talking, shh, I'm above the floor, Mr. Judd. We owe him $4,200 bucks. The contract probably, we're obligated to do it within a year. I think they sent us the bill a year ago, and we just haven't been able to bring it up until now, so we're both kind of like been holding bills for a long time. Yes, they may sue us, and we'll have Juliana go down and defend the lawsuit and get it dismissed after 10 hours of her time. So you were right, and it would get dismissed in the end. Did that answer your question?
I guess so.
Thanks. Mr. Jameson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. A question was raised about contracts. I do a lot of work in my business on purchase orders. They can be $4,000, $5,000, $10,000, $12,000. Just, I tell people to do work, they bill me. Bigger things, I have a contract. On the idea that's been bandied about here that we not approve this article, perhaps Mr. Gilligan might throw in a few key choice words about the impact on the town's credit rating, et cetera, if any. Do you feel so moved, Mr. Gilligan?
Mr. Gilligan, will this affect our stellar AAA bond rating? Stiffen contractors.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm making a dangerous question here.
Other things may affect our AAA bond rating, but this will not.
But do you, do you still, would you recommend passage?
You know, it comes down to good faith. Did the town enter into a contract in good faith? Did the arbitrators enter into a contract in good faith?
And Arlington, I would take it, from my general look, observation over being here almost 10, nine years, is it's a town of good faith.
Don't disagree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Deist?
John Deist, Precinct 13. I'd like to once again appeal to your good instincts. I mean, given that we know so little about what went on, you have no idea whether or not was it the AAA or these arbitrators or whatever, let's just vote the lousy $4,000 or whatever it is dollars. Thank you very much.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Thanks. Bill Berkowitz, Precinct 8. I don't think this is a good use of town meeting time. I think that in the absence of policy to the contrary, we should approve, of course, the $4,000, but I would like to ask Dr. Bodie if it's possible or if she's able to construct a policy that would prevent such occurrences from happening in the future.
Dr. Bodie, can you write a school department policy that will make that happen in the future? I don't see how she actually could, because, you know, it's a public contract and, who's yelling back there? They don't have the right to yell. Mr. Berkowitz has the floor.
Again, I would like to ask Dr. Bodie if the school department can construct a contract provisions which would mandate that bills be, invoices be submitted within a certain period of time.
What I can do is ask the American Arbitration Association if they could remind their arbitrators to submit their bills in a more timely fashion. I certainly will do that and actually already have, but I will reiterate it to them. The, any policies that are made vis a vis school committees, are created and passed by the school committee. I can't, I think the only thing that could happen differently would be if we waited longer perhaps to close out the books for a particular year, but that's certainly not the desirable way to handle this. These bills were encumbered, it's just that they were submitted after the books had been closed. I'm not sure that I can take this up with the Policies and Procedures Committee and get some advice on whether that's possible.
Well, based on what I understand, I would suggest that you do so and that that would apply not only to the AAA but also to other vendors that submit invoices to the school department because that would prevent such occurrences from happening in the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz. Mr. Marr?
I think this is a simple matter of whether or not we pay our bills, whether or not it gets submitted late. I don't, you know, having been in umpteen million arbitrations, you don't want to have arbitrators not, I think the town of Arlington is not going to pay their bills when they get submitted. It is a question of nine tenths vote, probably not going to happen, but I can assure you, as Mr. Siano suggested, that if these arbitrators go to court, there's no defense that I'm aware of that will keep them from getting a judgment, and it would be a poor waste of our capable town council's time to go down and try to defend a defenseless suit. Let's just vote this and get on with it.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. What's the Red Sox score?
Can't say anything else.
Oh, sorry.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9, motion to terminate debate under this article.
Second. All, we have a second, all in favor of terminating debate, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, debate is terminated. Mr. Schlickman will give us the score after the break. Now. We're paying prior year's bills with this year's money. It requires a nine tenths vote by state law. So that means 90% of the people, so all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Standing vote. All in favor of paying last bill, please write. Ms. Mahan? 11. Mr. Schlickman?
49.
49. Mr. O'Connor?
47.
Mr. Trembley?
47.
Mr. McCabe?
31.
All opposed, please rise.
Zero.
Zero up front.
One.
One on the left.
One.
One in the center.
Zero.
Zero on the right center. Mr. McCabe?
Eight.
Eight. That's 10. Who would be a nine-tenth? A tenth is 17. It is approved, 175 of the positive, 10 in the negative. It's 9:30 something. We're going to take a break, come back in 10 minutes. Thank you. And you have a score.
Red Sox are up 1-0. There are 19 seconds remaining in the basketball game. It's tied at 86.
Register their business.
Okay, we're back in session here. Next up. Warren, Article VII of the special town meeting, Board of Selectmen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to get our DPW head, Mike Ratammacher, to discuss this article. Thank you.
Mr. Ratammacher?
Thank you. My name is Mike Ratammacher. I'm the Director of Public Works. And the article here in question is for permission to, for the authority, to have easements taken by eminent domain for the Mass Ave corridor project. For those of you who may not be aware of this project, the town is working on a design that will reconstruct Mass Ave from Pond Lane to the Cambridge Line, approximately one mile of roadway. And associated with this project will be the reconstruction of sidewalks on either side of the road, so approximately two miles of sidewalk. The sidewalk will be built back in its current location, more or less, and so the backsides of the sidewalk will fall on property lines, just on the edge of the road right-of-way and the abutters properties along Mass Avenue. So it is unlikely that while you're constructing the sidewalk that you will, that you would need to, or it is likely that you would need to make some adjustments or regrade or make improvements to people's properties such as new lawn or adjusting a step or whatnot, which may be adjacent to the sidewalk. And such, because this project is being funded significantly through federal and state funds, it is required that we have these easements in place so that the town has the permission to enter on private property to make these adjustments, or the grading, or the seating, or the adjustments to people's steps that may abut the sidewalk again. The majority of the easements that we would be seeking will be temporary in nature, again, last just as long as the project and give us the permissions to do this kind of associated work. There are a small number, I believe six, permanent easements that will be required for this project. And those are for instances where we will have rebuilt handicap ramps. In order to meet today's standards for handicap ramps, there are greater space requirements than in the past. And the areas where these six, specific locations are, there is not enough room within the layout. So we would need to get a permanent easement to allow us to build the ramps correctly. In neither case would we be actually taking land from residents or property owners. We would essentially have easements. Again, the temporary easements would be for about a three-year period. The permanent easements would be for as long as we would maintain the handicap ramps that would require that easement. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Trembley?
Hey Trembley, Precinct 19. I got kind of an earful over the weekend about this from one of my neighbors, and don't misunderstand me, as an elected representative, it's my responsibility to hear my neighbors and hear what they have to say. But he was dead set against spending any kind of money on this. I mean, the amount of money that's been proposed, I think, is a little, to pay for some of these permanent easements is kind of a slushy figure. And there's nothing hard and fast there. But his philosophy was that if the town has the, Mr. Moderator, am I correct in thinking it was a hundred or $200,000 or something?
Mr. Ratammacher, could you have a dollar figure on how much this is going to run?
The process will require an assessment made of all the easements. Because the nature of, the vast majorities are temporary, we don't believe that they will be an exorbitant amount. We are estimating on the low side, or we're assuming about $100,000. That is the price for the actual cost of having the assessment done, and then the cost of the temporary and permanent easements. I believe at one point a statement was made between $100,000 and $200,000. Again, it was just a safety factor there.
Well, my neighbor's philosophy was that if the town has a spare $100,000 or $200,000 kicking around for a project that's controversial, to say the least, that they really don't need the money for a Prop 2.5 override. And he was, like I said, I got an earful about this. I had another question, Mr. Moderator. Are any of these handicapped ramps that we're talking about, will these be, are these going to stick out in the street?
Mr. Ratammacher?
I'll answer, I can add some insight to your first question about the cost of the easements. The state has funding available to the town for the cost of these easements with our Chapter 90 money, so it would not come out of the tax rolls for the easement costs. And as far as the handicap ramps, they would be within the sidewalk layout. There may be some within what's been called bumpouts, but I believe the six in question are not included in bumpouts. They're in areas where, because of turning movements or for other reasons, they're tighter into the property lines.
Okay. Well... Mr. Moderator, you can tell me, correct me if this is beyond the scope of the article here. I was going to invite all town meeting members to go take a look at the bumpouts out by CVS and observe the chunks of granite that are missing from those, I think they're six-month-old bumpouts. Each one of those chunks represents either a broken snowplow or somebody's wrecked car. And I don't think we should be building projects that wreck people's, the town residents' property and wreck the town equipment. I would plan on voting no on this because I don't, for two reasons, hearing my neighbors and because I don't think this is a good thing to spend money on. Thank you.
You want us to go on a field trip right now? Look, we do it...
At the termination of town meeting, no, I wouldn't suggest leaving now, no.
Mr. O'Brien?
Andy O'Brien, Precinct 16. I'm not going to really speak to the economics of the issues. Read many things online about how every billion dollars spent on construction projects results in a multiplier of something between $20,000 and $40,000 new jobs. Instead, I'll come up in defense of bricks. Just want to, Secretary of Energy Stephen Chu has suggested that giving roads and roofs a paler color would have the same effect of removing every car in the world off the road for 11 years. According to the EFP, it is a geal... What's that?
Bricks. We're talking about easements. Easements of sidewalks.
Okay, so I was led, okay.
Clarify what your point is. Maybe it's within scope.
Is this dealing with sidewalks?
Yeah, sidewalk easements.
Just the easements?
Yeah.
So it has nothing to do with bricks?
Not unless they're going to build all these sidewalks out of bricks.
Ratammacher?
Bricks or concrete? Concrete.
Okay, so, all right, the other night before town meeting, okay, I was under the impression that these sidewalks were going to be made out of bricks and there was some problem with that. Well, I'm a little embarrassed to be up here. I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Not a problem. Mr. Scott Smith?
Scott Smith, Article, Scott Smith, Precinct 5. Just wanted to talk briefly, very familiar with the whole project and this article, which is focused very specifically on the easements for the sidewalks. So, you know, it's not about number lanes, not about the motorist or cyclist combination. Even with a four-lane road, you would still need these easements to properly reconstruct the sidewalks. It is about pedestrian accommodation, disabilities accommodation. You heard the frustration of our Disabilities Commission representative last week at our town's slow progress in installing ramps. What this does is gives us the opportunities to do a number of ramps, places where they are substandard at one fell swoop. And this is a big ticket item. Should not pass up this opportunity. And of course, the driveway-street interface. That's what this is about. And about the sidewalk conditions. Next slide, please. And my colleague Adam Oster took a few of these pictures. I took a few. Some are in fair to good shape, some are in very rough shape. By Arlington Diner. Next, please. Ramp, that doesn't meet standards. Next, please. Some of the patches in driveways, pretty worn out. Next. Ramp down at Marathon Street. Next. See, more. These are a few I took, some tripping hazards. There's a hole by Fox Library. Substandard ramp. And last slide. Okay, so just to reiterate, easements give us the space we need to proper reconstruction of the sidewalks, enable ramps that meet ADA standards. And one interesting thing is, there was some discussion of bumpouts earlier. Well, one reason that bumpouts sometimes are built is when you have a right-of-way constraint, you don't have the ability, and you need to get some more sidewalk space to build a proper ramp, I think. Now, what I notice is the permanent easements tended to be at places where we don't have bumpouts. And finally enables the project to meet our pedestrian and disability's accommodation goals and should support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ruderman? Well, I think you may go on home. Come on up front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ruderman, Precinct 9. I'm confused about one thing that I think I might have misheard in passing. No matter what the design of this project and no matter how it's funded with Chapter 90 funds from the state, I believe that the town is responsible for acquiring rights of way. Is that correct? And by acquiring, meaning appraisal, appraisal negotiation, payment, payment to the owners, recording the documents, the registry of deeds, all that?
Yes, Mike Ratammacher, Director of Public Works. Correct, the project is fully funded through federal and state monies. What that funding didn't include was property acquisitions, which would include these easements. So the town is responsible for doing all the legwork and paperwork to get these easements. You are correct. Like I said, though, the funding, we are, the funding is, state funding is eligible to get these easements, just not as part of the original funding package for the program.
I'm sorry, that was the part I didn't understand. State funding is eligible for reimbursing the town?
The easements are eligible for state funding.
They're eligible for state...
And they will be. I mean, that won't be a problem. We've already had that conversation.
So we just have to go after it?
Correct.
Okay. We just got to go after the money. That's all. I was misinformed then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connors?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Connors from Precinct 7. I just want everyone to connect the dots to this particular article. By connecting the dots, I mean that if this article is passing, then the state Department of Transportation can move forward with their plan submitted by the town to create a Mass Ave corridor project. If this article is defeated, then that kills the Mass corridor project. Please connect the dots. Thank you.
Mr. Schleckman?
Paul Schleckman, Precinct 9. I respectfully disagree with the previous speaker. Let's examine the reasons. One, this is about sidewalk easements. That means that we want to either construct sidewalks on private property, or we want to be digging around and trespassing or intruding onto private property in the process of constructing these sidewalks. Logically speaking, Mass Ave, the travel portion of the avenue is not on private property. The only portion that is on private property is the far end of the sidewalk near the property line. If we are constructing handicapped ramps and require the easement, it is in order for the sidewalk to go onto private property, which means that they're not going out into the street, they're going the other way into the private property. The bottom line on this is that the curbs can go in the same place, the avenue can be constructed in the same way. The only thing we get if we defeat this is worse sidewalks. If you want crappy sidewalks, vote no. If you want the sidewalks to be done in conformance to standards and done well, vote yes and give them the room to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berger?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Berger, Precinct 6. I urge you to vote no on Article VII. Article VII is going to authorize the selectmen to acquire hundreds of easements in land necessary, we're told, to improve the sidewalks along Mass Ave and East Arlington. Many of these rights, as we've learned, are going to be temporary easements to facilitate construction. Some are going to be permanent land takings, needed, for example, to install wheelchair ramps. These easements are necessary, as has been pointed out, for the completion of the Mass Avenue Carter project, the $5.8 million roadway project reconstruction that's under review by the Mass Department of Transportation. Now, there are two reasons essentially why it would be disastrous to pass this article. First, the selectmen are asking you for a blank check. Though Article VII is vague, the selectmen have reported to town meeting they're going to be seeking easements for 226 temporary situations, six permanent easements from property owners along Mass Ave. And what they haven't told us is what's the cost going to be. Now, we have an estimate from the Department of Public Works that's going to be between $100,000 and $200,000. Not a small sum, but it's a reckless throw of the dice. We don't know how much this is going to cost. Now, we don't know the anticipated cost, for example, of each easement, or how that's going to be determined exactly. We don't know the legal cost the town may incur if property owners resist this and say, "We're not going to give you the eminent domain that you're requesting because we don't want to do it. So we'll go to court." All right, we'll go to court. Therefore, a vote for Article VII is a vote to give the selectmen, I maintain, unlimited and open-ended authority to purchase property and seek loans. And I maintain it's a Pandora's Box that we shouldn't open in these economic times. It's going to be fiscally irresponsible of us to allow the selectmen to take on such a potentially costly endeavor when there's no limit to our financial exposure. We don't know the end game. Voters expect us to know exactly what we're voting on, especially if it has to do with their money. And we don't know the answer. Secondly, the selectmen's asking for money now to improve sidewalks is like a person who can't pay his mortgage and he's going to put a pool in the backyard. I mean, it's an understatement to say things are tight now. We're in a fiscal tight situation. We're facing a substantial budget deficit. We're being told the, we're being told the selectmen cannot finance the basics, for example, with our schools, for our kids. We're up against it. Next month, we're going to be asking the residents, a lot of whom are up against it, to approve a $6.5 million tax override so we can fund the basics, like education for our kids. Now, in light of these circumstances, I'm telling you, it's fiscally irresponsible to ask you to open up the town's coffers to pay off property owners along Mass Ave to make roadway improvements. This is not the time to be spending money to improve anything. We're up against the wall. As a community, we need to keep our financial resources focused on the basics. Now, the selectmen will tell you that while the town needs to pay for the easements, the actual sidewalk improvements themselves, which is true, are going to be paid for by state and federal funds coming out of the Mass Ave project. Now, that is true, but the worst shocker of all is this, and really the most irresponsible part is this, that the Article VII authorizes the selectmen now to pay for the easements, to buy the property now, to go to court perhaps, in eminent domain now, before the project is approved. The project is far from a done deal. You may have heard or witnessed yourself that hundreds of Arlington residents packed this place. I mean, you couldn't get an empty, you couldn't find a seat. The balcony was full. There was standing room only. There were hundreds of people here, many of them expressing visceral opposition to the project. Now, the point is, the DOT witnessed this widespread opposition. And for all we know, they may decide not to fund the project. Maybe the DOT will decide to fund some other project in another town with a widespread common ground support for the project. And if that's the case, and there's no money to pay for the sidewalk improvements because the project didn't get funded, what good are the easements? Furthermore, a lawsuit could stop the Carter project dead and extract. Thank you, thank you.
You have to speak right into the mic.
All right, thank you very much. Furthermore, a lawsuit could stop the Carter project dead and extracts. Now, the selectmen, I maintain, are asking you to take an irresponsible leap of faith here. It's awfully premature. If you vote for Article VII and the Carter project is not approved, you're going to be part of this mess. You'll have authorized the purchase of easements and property that can't be used because the money to improve the sidewalks is not coming from the state and federal government because the project got turned down. Now, how are you going to explain that to your constituents? That you put the cart before the horse? I mean, if somebody comes up to you and says, "What did you spend the money for?" Do you know we're up against it? How could you gamble it? You didn't know for sure that the project was going to be approved, but you spent the money. I think it would be far more prudent, at least, to wait until we're certain that the Carter project is a done deal before asking the town meeting members here to spend our constituents' money to secure easements. To obtain some information needed to, I say, for us to intelligently vote on this so we understand the financial implications. First of all, I have a question for the... I have a question, thank you, for the selectmen or the gentleman from the Department of Public Works. How many parcels or pieces of property are going to be involved under the authorization?
How many, please?
How many total pieces of property?
Yes.
Are being purchased?
Will be involved, yes.
Are being involved.
Not necessarily, will be involved, right. Not necessarily purchased.
There are currently 230 temporary easements and six permanent easements proposed.
Okay, thank you. How many, just another question, please.
How many?
I'm sorry, Mike Ratammacher, Director of Public Works.
I think, Mike. How many are going to be acquired, do you know, by eminent domain or purchase?
Well, we, until we get into the, they would all be essentially, potentially could be by eminent domain, depending on the, how the process goes as we're reaching out to residents or property owners.
What town budget is the money going to come from?
It's going to come from state funds.
Have you gotten that in writing?
We did. We asked the state, and they said the money that is available to the town is eligible for property acquisition.
So that is going to be a separate grant or a separate...
Correct. It's a separate, it's a separate pool of money from this project.
Are you going to need to borrow any money?
No.
You're not. Okay. How much money has been allocated for the legal costs?
We haven't, our county council would handle most of that.
Have you allocated any money for that?
No, not that I'm aware of. The council could answer that better than I.
Okay.
Ms. Rice, has any money been allocated through your office?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Juliana Rice, Town Council. You all already pay me, so I guess it has, but not in connection with this project.
Okay, well, I'm going to vote no. I say it's not the right time to approve this project because of the fiscal situation that we're in the town. So I'm going to vote no on this, and I ask you to also.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKinney? For what purpose do you rise?
Point of water.
What's your point of order, sir? What do you want to do?
I'd like to know what we're discussing.
I'd like to know what we're discussing. I know, I know we're talking about Article 7, and under my report, it says the selectmen will report. They have reported, but I don't have a recommended vote, and unless we have a recommended vote, then we're wasting our time. Now, I'm being shown an article in the annual town meeting warrant, but we're not in the annual town meeting, we're in the special town meeting. So, Mr. Moderator, what is the recommended vote that we're talking about so that we can see precisely what we're voting? And unless we have it in writing, I suggest that we put this off for another meeting.
I have an answer for you. We have an answer. Ms. Rowe? Can you tell him that the recommended vote is the same as 58, correct?
Yes. The recommended vote is on page 26 and 27 of this booklet.
Mr. Moderator, that is the report for the annual town meeting. We are not in the annual town.
Harry.
Mistress.
The same vote for Article 58 is Article 7.
Say it again. It has the same, Article 58 slash special town meeting, Article 7.
Is that a technical cue, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, it is, sir.
Thank you very much.
So, does everybody else understand that too? It's a legit question. Article 58 is also, recommended vote is also the recommended vote for Article 7. So, Article 50... Shh, I asked you, Mr. Judd, not to be yelling. Stop it. Now, Article 58 of the annual town meeting is the same recommended vote for Article 7 of the special. I have it in front of me. It's right there. There it is. It's the same. And then they have their amendment, which is all these, this really tiny print that I, for the life of me, can't read. There's grids and grids of all the properties. Every single one of them is listed. That was in their supplemental report, I believe. Is that clear, Mr. McCabe? All right, can you tell us where that is?
In the very back of this report are about 1, 2, 3, 4, 8 pages, 10 pages of all the easements that we'd be asking for, both permanent and temporary.
Mr. Streifel?
I was listening to the discussions here, and I'm going to ask some questions that I believe are rhetorical, but I'm going to ask them anyway, and I guess they go beyond rhetorical because I'm asking questions. This article in absolutely no way appropriates any money. Is that correct, Mr. Moderator?
No, it is, um, wait a second. The recommended vote under Article 58 slash 7 does not appropriate money.
Okay, and there's no way that the town is going to be obligated for any expenses under this? That is correct?
That's how I'm reading it.
Okay, and...
I got you, Mr. McKinney.
Oh, the clocky.
Sorry.
And there is, and whether this is passed or not, I read in this extra handout that was distributed sometime that what happens if the town meeting votes no, and it says the town meeting may seek to resign the project or eliminate or minimize sidewalk reconstruction, some sidewalks will not get replaced, the town would investigate replacing a portion of the sidewalks in a way that would not require easements. So, there is absolutely no way that this vote is going to affect whether or not the Mass Ave corridor project goes through, correct?
I don't know what you have in your hand, but, oh, the one that wasn't signed. Yes, or else supposed to ignore because it wasn't signed. But if that's what it says, I'm going to believe you.
Okay.
This document will speak for itself, so whoever puts stuff out should actually sign it from now on. There's also a map that was never signed, so go ahead.
So, the Mass Ave corridor project is going to continue on as is regardless of what gets passed here? And the only effect will be that, according to this, the sidewalks replacement will have to be done some other way. And I bring this up because some people have linked the two together, but if the Mass Ave corridor project doesn't get done, then I hope you can answer, will that have a financial impact on the town, or is that too far off topic?
Mr. Tosti.
Could you just repeat that question again, please?
So, some people have suggested that if we don't pass this, the Mass Ave corridor project won't get done, and that would be financially better off, or that will leave the town financially better off.
Well, if you like tripping over sidewalks, I think that the, at some point, drive down East Arlington, walk on the sidewalks. They're in horrible condition.
Address this question, please.
But it won't affect the finances of the town.
We'll have to do the work sometime.
Okay, and then if we have to do the work sometime, then we'll have to pay for that. And if we do it now, it gets paid for by the state. Therefore, if we, if it didn't get done, okay. So, this article, despite what some of the folks who have been opposing it have said, does not in any way affect going ahead of the Mass Ave corridor project, and it does not save the town any money. Makes all the sense in the world to vote yes because it's in our best interest.
Okay, thank you. To address Mr. McCabe again, on page 26 of the selectman report, the very bottom, it says Article 58, special town meeting, Article 7, voted. That's what we're voting on. So, you all should have that on page 26 of your blue book, along with the teeny tiny grids. Mr. McKinney? I got mine. Lawrence McKinney, 7th precinct, home of the disgusting sidewalks. And the useless Uncle Sam committee, and, well, anyway. My question is, and I have not heard any definitive answer, and that's all I'm here for. Some people say maybe it will stop, or maybe it won't stop. Who here can give us a definitive answer? If we vote this down, could this affect the DOT to the extent that they would not go through with the project? In other words, could this be the stick and the spokes that stops it? And I haven't heard a definitive answer yet. Ah... Ms. Rowe's going to give us a...
It's my opinion that this would not stop, but thank you.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to hear. You can't get much higher than the chief selectman. Thank you. Ms. Romano? That's chairman of the board of selectmen.
Maria Romano, Precinct 7. Actually, the easements, the reworking of the sidewalks, are absolutely essential. We want to meet handicap standards. To say that one has nothing to do with the other is not true. First of all, you can't do the easements in the proper way until the Mass Ave project is approved, because you might put the handicap accessible ramps in the wrong place, depending on the final plan that is accepted. So, when we speak of not putting the cart before the horse, or the horse whatever it is, it's true. We want the funding, just as we want the funding for Mass Ave. We're not going to lose the funding 90 if we get on the list. We're not going to lose the Mass Ave money if we get on the list. We're not on either list, as far as I could see. We're going to ask for the money, but they are very much tied in. And I think the answer is, before we take people's property, either willingly or by eminent domain, we better find out what the Mass Ave project is going to look like at the end, and then we do it. Thank you.
There's no real question? There wasn't a real question there?
Adam Oster, Precinct 3. This is my part of town, too. Mr. Moderator, I have a recollection, a vague recollection, that we have done something like this not too long ago. Can you refresh my memory?
Last year, we took easements up by the Dallin School to make nice sidewalks for the kids. Is that true, Mr. Rattamacher? Yeah, is that what you're referring to, sir?
I think so. I mean, my impression is this is a kind of routine thing that we do when we do sidewalks, because you need to do this when you do sidewalks. Did the selectmen have a vote on this?
Yes.
What was the vote?
Page 26 of your blue book, down the bottom. And 27 on the top, it continues, yes. See, it says Article 58, annual special town meeting, Article 7. So, instead of printing it twice, they printed it once and saved this paper.
I see there that it says that this is conditional on conformance with plans as approved at 25% by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, and goes on from there. The way that I read that, and if anyone understands differently, I'd like to hear from them, is that it's contingent on that approval, so there's no danger, those people who actually are concerned that we would go ahead and start, you know, taking land and taking easements before the approval came through, there's no danger of that happening, is there?
Ms. Rowe, is there a danger of that happening?
There is no danger of that happening, and obviously, we're not going to have town councils' time spent on something that is not going to go forward. This is a, one of the things, this is a very traditional way of timing the easements. The easements come at this point in time because the easement process takes quite a long time. You have to find out if people are willing to donate their temporary easements or whether they want to be paid for them. It's very time consuming, as Mike can tell you, and the reason that we're starting this now is to start the process. The design is not finished, so we don't have the final, exact, permanent easements or temporary easements. It's to start a process, and that's the reason for it.
Mr. Moderator, it seems to me that there's a kind of an irony here. I understand that there's a lot of controversy about the design of the project, but it sounds like, should town meeting withhold this authority from this particular project because of its association with this design, that the result would be that the design would go through and that the road would be completely rebuilt, and in fact, bicycles would have a first-class accommodation as a result, but pedestrians would not. And that's not fair to those of us who live in the neighborhood. It's really not fair to people who are in wheelchairs and using walkers and have to get around. And it's also unfair to put businesses through the agony of construction, which is going to be considerable, and then say to them, "Oh, but the sidewalks that people use to get to your front door, second-class job." So, I'm going to ask town meeting, including the opponents of this project, to seriously consider letting the sidewalks get fixed, because they're in rough shape and they really need it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Peter Fiori?
If you're in Precinct 2, I'm just curious if the selectmen of the... PW spoke with any of these abutters and got any kind of preliminary idea if they're going to just hand over the easements or they're going to expect to be compensated? I'm just curious. That's a lot of easements. Have you done any kind of straw poll?
Has, Mr. Rattamacher, have any of the neighbors or abutters been contacted yet?
Mike Rattamacher, Director of Public Works. We have not started to reach out to abutters yet in this manner for easements.
Elsie Fiori, Precinct 2. I put this article in the same class as Article 51 that we just spent a night and a half on. There is a lot of confusion, and I do see that on the comment that the, under Article 58, says that these rights and things do need to be taken in order to conform to the public works project. Now, they don't say, are there goals? Now, they don't say necessarily that it's the whole thing going down Mass Avenue, but as a previous speaker just said, this whole thing is the benefit of bicycle riders because there's not enough room on our bike path for bike riders, and the bike riders want to tell us that they are very safe.
Point of order? Yep. What's your point of order, Mr. Smith?
See the relevance of this to the easements on the sidewalks?
Yep. They're questioning your scope of the bicycles and the easements of the sidewalks. Can you explain?
Well, I only know that they're, I guess that I probably made a mistake in going into the discussion of the project itself, but it seems to me it's mentioned in these articles, which are confusing because they're in two books, and it said, "The Arlington Board of Selectmen, we're going to report on this." And in Article 7 of the special town meeting, in the original article that's in this thing, it says that the replacement of the sidewalks is in connection with the Commonwealth's Transportation Improvement Program, which includes widening the sidewalks so people can, the businesses can have dining out on the sidewalks and...
That's not in the Article 7 warrant, Ms. Fiori. Article 7 warrant, as printed in the warrant, just talks about acquiring outright or acquiring permanent temporary easements along Mass Ave, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Talks nothing about sidewalks and dining and anything like that. That's in the big old plan that hasn't been approved yet.
Well, I don't, I'm going to put it back in, that it's in the same confusing place that we were on Article 51. And what I would like to know is, the, somebody is very busy putting in handicap slope ramps on all the streets down around where I am, down Mott Street, Mary Street, Mass Lake Street. Who's paying for all of that? And we didn't have that come before us to vote. So, it seems to me they're so tied together that I would like the article to be voted down until we have better information. I'm sorry if I've confused more people than I should have.
Thank you. Mr. Rattamacher, who's paying for the ramps down in the girl streets?
That ramp project is being paid for through a grant received by the Disabilities Commission.
Okey-doke. Mr. Grant Cook?
Grant Cook, Precinct 6. My credibility on this issue, actually, I live on Orvis, which is kind of just a little bit up off Lake Street, and I look out every morning to see cars backed up on my street, trying to cut through the Lake Street intersection to avoid having to wait. And on the weekends, I look out my front window to see cars speeding by at 40 miles an hour trying to win an intersection, and as I look over to my newborn son and realize he'll be playing out there one day, I'm deeply troubled by how this is being handled. I, I know the initial justification for the project and the easements and everything around it was tied to, tied to safety, and I worry that, at least in my perspective, the cut-through traffic safety issue hasn't been addressed. But it's probably outside of scope.
Yeah, let's keep it within the scope.
But let's look at the opponent, let's look at the issues here around this. I mean, there's a group of people who are vehemently in support of this. Where's the town selectmen behind me? They want this money like I want chicken wings on game day. I mean, it's free money. What the heck? You get to say that area will have to be rehabilitated, and they would paint the road pink and name it the Idi Amin Throughway if it meant the state would give them free money for this. money for this. I mean, it's, no. Would you think they wouldn't, they don't want this money and would do whatever's necessary to get it? They do, they do. There are those of us who are against it, you know, for reasons of a lot of our, and there are those of us who are for it. The price is a bike lane. But don't get up here and say this is an issue of inconsequence, that you have to vote for this because it just makes sense, it'll make the construction easier. I mean, Captain Ahab didn't give Moby Dick some accommodation because it made things easier for the boat. If you're against it, you vote against something, you don't support it. And for those of us who are saying no to this, saying no to this is one, another way of getting our voice out there, that we do not approve of how this is being handled. This is too divisive an issue to go forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Logan?
Logan, Precinct Two. I have a question for the Department of Public Works.
Address the question to me, I'll get who the right person is.
Yes. The sidewalks, the, the ones that were, that are being put in now, are they going to be wider?
Are you going to be changing the width of the sidewalks, Mr. Radamacher?
Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works. There has been many iterations on the sidewalks and their width. For the most part, they will remain the same width. There will be some areas that will be wider, and some that may even be narrower, but I don't believe there's going to be a drastic change in the width of the sidewalks in the proposed project.
And why are they going to be wider in those areas?
Some areas, for instance, in front of the Capitol Theater, it was determined that because there was a bus stop there and there was many folks needed a sidewalk, I believe we were able to find some space for a sidewalk there, for example.
Now, the ramps, getting back to you mentioned, someone else mentioned, I believe it was Elsie, about the ramps that were put in the Lake Street area? Are those ramps ADA, they fit in with the ADA guidelines?
The ramps being built currently today?
Yes, in like the Mary Street, Lake Street area.
I'm going to allow an answer to that question, but that's really off-scope of the Mass Ave easements that we're talking about. You already told us, you're asking if the current ramps being built in other part of the town are ADA compliant? Of course they're ADA compliant, why else would we build them? But you can answer the question, Mr. Radamacher.
So let me rephrase my question, so it's more-
But let's keep it within the scope of the warrant article.
Are those the same types of ramps that are going to be built on Mass Ave?
The ramps will take different configurations. They depend, no matter how they're built or what configuration, there are certain slopes, widths, and dimensions that have to be met, and they will be met.
Now, you said there'd also be about two, over two hundred temporary easements, right?
Correct.
Okay. And did you need that many easements for the Lake Street area or that area?
No, this is a much greater scope-
Okay, I just wanted to point that out, so I don't feel that we need all these easements. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
I just wanted to point out that there really isn't anything confusing about this project, despite the fact that, you know, some of the opponents of this project would like you to think this is a very confusing subject. Straightforward, I think we all agree, particularly the people in East Arlington, that the sidewalks in that area need to be replaced. If the state is willing to step up and pay approximately a million dollars to replace those sidewalks for us, we have to get these temporary easements and six permanent easements in order to make that happen. It's not unusual on construction projects, it's required for all federal and state projects. When we do local projects, we don't bother going through that formal process, we just talk to the homeowner. We may have to step on your property when we're doing this. Sidewalk is our right to enter your property. But it's a pretty straightforward process in obtaining these easements, as you heard already. We have state funds already available to cover the costs of acquiring these easements. And I think we owe it to the taxpayers. If this work has to be done, and I think we all agree, why turn down the million dollars to have these sidewalks replaced? If we turn it down, as you heard earlier, okay, we'll leave the sidewalks as-is and we'll just go ahead with the roadway project, but I don't think that's doing a service to the people in East Arlington to leave the sidewalks in that condition. And it's going to be a bill that the taxpayers in this community are going to have to pay, because those sidewalks will have to be replaced eventually.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison.
Gordon Jamison, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sit down. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct Twelve. What Mr. Sullivan very eloquently stated was that if we don't take the money for the sidewalks in East Arlington, we will have to pay for it out of our own pockets. What one previous speaker suggested was that if we take the five-point-one million dollars and take, and put, that we could potentially put it in the town coffers. That is false, as I understand it from the discussion that has come. We cannot take that money and re-stick it in our coffers to help our financial situation. Our financial situation is what it is. This project is something completely different financially. Mr. Reddimer, or Mr. Sullivan, mentioned that when we do local construction, we don't have to have easements. When I first moved into the town, they had redone the water and sewer drains on my street, and they came by later and did the sidewalk, which is very nice. Nice to have a new sidewalk in front of your store, or house, or business. Someone talked about the money. I've heard several times, repeatedly, that this is not going to cost us anything, that the state is going to reimburse us for this. The state reimburses for lots of things. We have special education costs. We get reimbursed the next year. We don't ask for a mandate in front of Town Meeting that that process is going to happen. Someone mentioned we're spending money without an appropriation. We're not. We're getting reimbursed. Someone, we've been talking a lot about permanent and temporary easements. And as noted by Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Reddimer, these are required to get the funds that are going to do the sidewalks and do the Mass Ave project if it's approved by the state. We've talked about permanent and temporary. These are easements. Easements, and perhaps Ms. Rice can further clarify, easements are different than taking land. If you look on the far-right corner here, there's, there's a column called Total Taken, Square Feet. That's the land the town takes from someone. I only see zeros. What this means is someone is going to build a sidewalk. I don't see anything but zeros. Correct me if I'm wrong, someone, but no one's land is going to be taken. They're going to build a sidewalk and go away, or they're going to build a sidewalk that has a little bit on your property. Now, on the ones that are permanent, I see square foot, twenty-three, number one. Square foot, thirty-four. Square foot, thirty-six. I think I got one more here somewhere, I might have missed one, but you get the general idea. We're talking three by ten feet, or a foot by twenty feet. This is not like, you know, great encroachment on someone's land, and they get a nice new sidewalk that they can walk on, or their kids can ride their bicycles on, and when they go to the ramp, they can roll their bike, or their scooter, or their walker, up and down safely. So I think this is a great idea, and we should support it. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher? Mr. Haner? Mr. Bayer?
Paul Bayer, Precinct Thirteen. Remove the question, not on all matters, wouldn't give this article.
What, Mr. Judd? Point to your eyes. Why are you trying to find the mic? Can we take our vote?
My point of order is, how can we spend money without appropriating it?
There's no, Mr. Judd, excuse me-
May I answer your question? There's no appropriation in this article.
It says that the Board of Selectmen being hereby is authorized to acquire by eminent domain, purchase, or otherwise interest. That sounds to me like money.
I don't see a dollar figure. We're not spending money-
That's what I'm getting-
Sir, you didn't get called, I'm sorry. Juliana, are we spending a penny? I'm going to entertain you, because otherwise you're not going to shut up. Please, answer your question. We're spending a penny under this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Juliana Rice, Town Council. There's no appropriation requested. The expenses would be paid out of Chapter Ninety money, as Mr. Radamacher has already said, that is separately appropriated.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have a motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. Do we need a two-thirds vote on this, because we're acquiring property? Yes. Okay. All in favor of Article Seven recommended vote, as printed in the booklet, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
Okay. We're going to have a standing vote, because it's two-thirds, because we're acquiring property. All in favor of the recommended vote, please rise. Up front, yes you may, sir. Ten. Ten up front. Mr. Schlickman?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two on the left.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Mr. Trembley?
Thirty-six.
Mr. McCabe?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. All opposed to the recommended vote, please rise. Zero up front. Mr. Trembley?
Nine.
Nine. Mr. Schlickman?
Seven.
Seven. Mr. O'Connor?
Five.
Mr. McCabe?
Eleven.
Eleven. Okay, votes in the affirmative, one hundred and thirty-five to thirty-two. Thirty-two, approved. Okay, the special town meeting is, we've run out of things to do, so we're now in recess. We are now going to go, I believe, the next, back to the beginning and start again to number eighteen would be the next one. Mr. Judd, I'm going to give you fair warning. If you have any more outbursts, you stand up, you divide this chair, I'll have you removed from the hall. I spoke to you in private, and now I've spoken to you twice, at least in this meeting. I appreciate your compliance with our rules of the quorum, as pointed out in the booklet. If you don't have one, we can get you one. Please, I don't have to want to speak to you again. It's disruptive of the meeting and those around you, and everyone in general. Thank you. Ms. Rowe, number Article Eighteen of the annual town meeting? Seventeen, I think, is postponed to the eleventh, by my count. Yes.
Yes, we're back to portable storage containers, or pods.
Yeah, that, that mic's not working too well.
We're back to portable storage containers, or pods. I rise to tell you that the Board of Selectmen have voted the fees for both pods and dumpsters, and they are twenty-four dollars.
Okay, when we had postponed last, we were confused about what the fees were, and we've now been told that they're twenty-four dollars. I don't, do we have to? No. We're talking about pods and licensing them to sit on the streets, not on public property, strictly on the streets and the byways of the town. Mr. O'Connor, you are next on the list. You were next on the list. Did you want to talk about pods? Do you still want to talk about them? Pass. Mr. Jamison, do you want to talk about pods? No. There was some guy in a white shirt in the third row. Mr. Butler? Mr. Chappett? Do you want to talk about pods? No? Mr. Deist? Oh, someone moved the question. Ms. LaCourte? Do you want to talk about pods?
Ms. LaCourte, Precinct Fifteen. Move the question.
Thank you. We have a motion to terminate debate. All in favor of termination of debate, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Okay, we have, it is an affirmative vote, and I so declare. Yes, sir. We do have the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen, it has not changed. Yeah, it's in your votes. Article Eighteen is printed in their report. They had a motion to amend, which deleted some words, and we've been told in the meantime that the fine is twenty-five bucks, or the fee is twenty-four dollars or something. So, all in favor of termination of debate, we just did that. So we have before us the, we had a motion to amend, by the selectmen, to amend their own vote, which deleted some words. You should all have that in front of you. We have that? It was on this colored paper, yellow. It's been on the chairs since the twenty-seventh. Basically, it's the same one, except it got rid of sentence B. Same as printed in your report, except it got rid of sentence B. Yes, Ms. Fiori, what purpose do you rise? We terminated debate. We terminated debate. Well, we terminated debate on all issues before us. We're now just figuring out what we're voting on. On your chairs, the yellow motion to amend. Yep. They gave it to me. Was this given to everybody, Ms. Rowe? Yes. Marie Capelka says it was. On the twenty-seventh. Put on your chairs with the motion to amend, which was made and seconded. All it did was change from the recommended vote, got rid of subsection B. That's all it did. Correct? Well, you should. It was put on your chairs. Ms. Capelka told me it was, I believe her. What do you want, Ms. Phelps, may I help you? What point do you rise?
Sure, that's because it's B. I don't think it's put on chairs, but it was here to vote, and most of us may know what's in there.
Yep. I agree with you, Ms. Phelps. All right, so the recommended vote is as printed in, the motion to amend is the recommended vote deleting the subsection B. All in favor of the amended motion, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? It's so, so amended. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen as amended, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? It is approved. As amended. That next would bring us to Article Twenty-One. Mr. O'Connor, do you wish to speak to that? Then Mr. Tostie.
Thank you, sir. James O'Connor, Precinct Twenty-One. Geez, I'll get the precinct right pretty quick. Precinct Nineteen.
Yeah, Mike, Mr. O'Connor, can you use the left or right mic? That center mic doesn't seem to be functioning. Ms. Rowe?
James O'Connor, Precinct Nineteen. I rise before you tonight, not from Precinct Nineteen, but as a member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. We were called upon in the town meeting three years ago, two thousand and seven, to come together to discuss various procedures that might benefit Town Meeting and attract new members, make appearance in Town Meeting, more alluring to those in the town. Back in two thousand and eight, there was an article before Town Meeting. This article, let me just, was Article Seventeen. Article Seventeen, the Board of Selectmen chose to vote no action, and in Article Seventeen at the time, the Board made no recommendation under the article. They further stated, "The Board's policy was suspect to the annual town-" article. They further stated, "The board's policy with respect to the annual town meeting warrant is that the board shall endeavor, subject to extenuating circumstances, that the warrant for the annual town meeting be open not later than the first week of December, nor be closed earlier than the third full week of January." Further, they stated, "The board will not depart from this policy without prior consultation with the Town Meeting Procedures Committee." So I submit to you tonight, since the Board of Selectmen voted basically no recommendation, because the vote was two to two, that there's a substitute article. For those of you who don't have a copy of this, it's up here, and it was presented to your seats last week, the week before. What I looked at was the prior four years, 1998, 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2011, and looked at the history of how this warrant has been opened. In the first year in question, Mr. Marr, our Town Council Emeritus, presented to the board on a meeting that was held on, 12-3-2007, that they make sure that they present to the paper a legal notice for the warrant to be open on December 17th at 8:00 a.m., and remain open until 12:00 noon on Jan- January 11th. Because that affected the amount of time that the townspeople have entitlement to present a warrant article, the Town Meeting Procedures Committee presented this warrant article, was heard in 2008. The Board of Selectmen saw fit to endeavor an agreement that they would abide by a plan and come to the Town Meeting Procedures Committee if there were gonna be a change. The Town Meeting Procedures Committee this year met in January, and we discussed the problem that at a December meeting, on December, the, excuse me, on 11/29 of 2010, Mr. Greeley proposed that the 2011 warrant be open on December 7th and close on January 7th. That didn't fit with the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, nor did it fit with the promise made by the Board of Selectmen. So you may or may not hear from the board tonight that there's a difficulty in trying to meet the demands of all of the hearings that may or may not be held in compliance with the various boards and committees that have to review the warrant. But it was interesting that as your Assistant Town Moderator, I'm part of the statewide blog of moderators, where this very issue about the time being open for a warrant was addressed just this weekend. Many of the moderators discussed the issues before them, and the townspeople have had some concerns, as was heard tonight, about maybe the boards not being interested in serving the people as much as they could by having warrants open less time than allowable. Under state law, the town warrant for the town meeting is for the townspeople. You and I, as individual residents, to vote, or to request that considerations be made at town meeting. When we discussed this, we discussed the possible dates, as the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, as to what would be the appropriate start date. It was already agreed upon by the board that it would be the first week of December. We remained with that. What I've heard recently was, just last week, we talked about how the town manager requested that all of the boards meet, not the boards, but the town departments, come together with a balanced budget to be given to him. One of the things that the Finance Committee has discussed is that it's an arduous task to review all of the finance articles. If we have now a procedure where the town departments present to the manager a consolidated report of a balanced budget, and he can then submit that to the Finance Committee, this may alleviate some of the burden, although Mr. Toasty may address that later in this discussion. We also heard that a lot of the boards get together monthly and meet and can discuss, as has happened many a time, when the Board of Selectmen have decided to present a warrant article, that they've met in the months of December and January, and discuss the merits of their proposal before it's ever published in the warrant. If we start the debate early enough, we enable these matters to be heard early on, so that the townspeople articles, the 10 registered voter articles, the articles for the people that are not specifically represented here, have a chance to express their opinion. So I ask you to consider that this be the motion before us. So I ask for a second for-
Seconded.
And I firmly believe that this is something that the Town Meeting Procedures Committee put together, so that we can have a open meeting for the public. Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn. Before we take the vote, I'm gonna call for any motions for reconsideration on either the special or the annual town meeting. I already have Mr. Rudeman's. I have Mr. Toasty's, who's serving notice on specials 2, 3, and 6, and the other notices for reconsideration. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor of adjournment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? We're so adjourned till Wednesday.